Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And we will begin our May, first meeting of May for our Richcrest City Council. Thank you for everyone who's here. So excited to see lots of faces here in the crowd. That always makes for a great meeting. We'll go and call our meeting to order with roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Here.
Councilman Gorman.
Here.
Councilman Hayman.
Present.
Councilman Rajarothnum.
Present.
Councilman Blades. Five present, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Next is approval of our agenda. I am not aware of any changes to our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So amonked.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Councilman Gorman.
Aye.
Councilman Hayman.
Aye.
Councilman Rajarothnum.
Aye.
Councilman Blades.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, next is our regular session will begin. If I can ask Captain Dan Pierre if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance and ask everyone to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilman Rajarothnum, if you'd lead us on the invocation, please.
Please join me in prayer if you would, Lord. Thank you for this day. Thank you for this city of Richcrest which you have given to us where we live and we cherish. Lord, as we celebrate, observe National Day of Prayer tomorrow, Lord, we come to you with thankful hearts, Lord. We thank you for the blessings which have poured on us and throughout our great nation, Lord. Lord, thank you for the way you have been protecting this country, Lord. I ask you to pour out your blessings, pour out your love on this country, Lord. Lord, we are thankful for this great nation. Lord, let this nation be a beacon of hope for many countries. Lord, let this country be a symbol of liberty and a statement of freedom, Lord. Lord, be with us, protect all of us. Lord, we fervently pray for our community and our country. We pray for the leadership of the country, give them your guidance so that they lead us in the right direction, Lord. Pray for the city council, Lord, give them your wisdom, your discernment as we take decisions which are beneficial to this community. Lord, pray for the city managers, city staff who work hard to make this place a better place for all of us to live in, Lord. I pray for our police department who put their lives on line as they try to protect this community, Lord. Bless them and give them your protection always, Lord. Lord, same way, I pray for the growth of this community. I pray for the base and its leadership, hospital and the leadership, schools and the leadership, the churches and the leaderships, Lord, as they all work for the benefit of this community. Give them your guidance, Lord. Lord, be with all of us here and bless this community once again, Lord. I ask this in the most precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
We have several presentations this evening. I'd like to ask my council to join me at the podium, and we will begin with those. Oh, they put up a quote. I like it. I didn't know they were going to do that. So, for Jessica, the unnamed recipient of the key to the city for this evening, it's my honor to present, the person's name is already up there and has been presented, so I'm going to butcher this a little bit from the professional because it's personal. Two years ago, two and a half years ago, we established the Key to the City program in which we each, as council members, are allowed to nominate individuals that we feel are worthy of recognition in our community for what they've done above and beyond and consistently to support our community. And it was my honor to submit Ms. Janice Botroff, who is in the audience, and I thank her for being here, for a key to the city. And I got the special honor of actually presenting it to her last Saturday night. And the reason why it's so important that it was presented to her last Saturday night is for anybody who's out there and doesn't know, last Saturday, last Friday night and Saturday night, we celebrated the 29th Annual Star Follies for the City of Richcrest that are organized by the Richcrest Chamber of Commerce. And Janice has been the driving force of this show for every single cast member, for every single person. I don't know if it's from day one, but I know for every day that I have ever been involved in the show, you have been there, and that's almost 20 years. But more importantly, Janice has had a much larger influence on our community than we ever give it credit. And that credit is in building leaders. The Star Follies has been, interestingly enough, lambasted by some as humorous, attacked by others as being inappropriate, and shared and loved by those that participate and see it every time. And in 2020, when I was first considering my run for mayor, about six days before the election, somebody chose to anonymously send a text message out of a picture of me in a nurse's uniform, complete with the garters and white stockings, and proceeded to say, "Is this what you want for your leadership of your community?"
Wow.
And I praise God and thank him for what happened that night, which is, my wife saw that. And being somebody who is getting ready to take on the burden and responsibility of hearing people say negative things about her loved ones, she got an outpouring of support from what we call the Follies family. And the Follies family came out and said, "This is never what the Follies was about, and it's never going to be what the Follies is about." And I repaid that debt this last weekend by being back on the stage, and I'm still feeling it today. But it was Janice, all those years ago, that encouraged and supported and organized. And I was started part of the Follies from 2004 until 2011. And then I had my first son. I said, "It's time for me to change," and the next evolution in my life came. And then I got the chance to be with the cast again this year. And the moment I stepped on that floor, I knew I wanted to present her the key to the city at that last show. I had two goals in mind. First was to make her cry, which I accomplished. And the second was to remind her that you may not understand how important that show is and every year, and how it frustrates and cajol's you and everything else, but I, as a leader, would not be here without you. I would not be in the role to be able to serve this community without the relationships and the commitments and all of those years spent dancing on that lovely stage in a variety of outfits, but also to have showed us the courage and love that I needed in that moment in 2020, when I knew that the hardest part ahead of me was going to be the challenges and those people that don't like change and don't want to react to change and choose to use our community as an example of the bad rather than of the good. We have an incredible community, and everyone who went to that show this weekend knows it. And they saw 60 people out there dancing their little hearts out because they love Richcrest. I love Richcrest. I love Janice Botroff. I love for everything that she's done for me. And that's why this is an emotional key. This is a thank you key, but more importantly is, God forbid you ever stop this, we're in deep trouble. And thank you for everything, and I'd like to ask everyone to give a round of applause to our key to the city recipient, Janice Botroff. Come here. You get together again and take pictures. So we presented it to her Saturday. She had to return it for today. But then she gets a chance to say anything she'd like, and she gets a chance to take pictures. Should I do the dance pose?
Oh, wait, I didn't get it.
Oh. So if you'd like to say anything, Janice.
I'm just very honored, but I think there's a lot of people out in this community that are more deserving than me. But I love the city. I love the businesses, and I love our residents. And whenever I can help any of those, I'm right there. So if you want to be in the Follies, let me know. And if you want to run for city council, I mean for Chamber Commerce Office, let me know. But thank you.
Janice, can we get a, oh, Janice, can we get a photo with council? Janice? Janice, can we get a photo with council?
With council.
Hey Travis, you're supposed to be. I got it for you, you're on the phone.
Working on a CFP, so.
Yes, we have five of these today. That was one. We're going to be here for a bit.
So tomorrow is National Day of Prayer. So Richcrest, I think it has been celebrating, observing National Day of Prayer for the last over 50 years. So that's a great event which is always appreciated by the community here. So National Day of Prayer has been, I think it is a vital part of American heritage. It goes way back to, I think, 1775, since we started observing National Day of Prayer. And prayer has been vital part of our nation since that time. Yeah. In 1952, legislation has been passed and it was made a law that we observe National Day of Prayer every year. And then that was signed by, I think, President Truman. So, but it goes back, way back to President Washington's term, and it has been part of our culture since that time. So I'm very proud to present this proclamation, and I really appreciate Mr. Larry Bird and Kiwanis for making this event happen, and they have been taking care of this for a long time in this community. So I really appreciate your hard work, and I'm going to read this proclamation. A proclamation of the City of Richcrest, California, National Day of Prayer, May 4, 2023. Whereas the morning of May 4, 2023, has been designated as a time for the National Prayer Breakfast, a yearly occasion when leaders of all faiths gather to combine their prayers to strengthen the spiritual base of our nation. And whereas the tradition of National Prayer Breakfast was established in February 1952 in Washington, DC, by both Houses of Congress, with the first Thursday in May established as a firm day for this event by President Reagan on May 5, 1982, and has been celebrated in the Indian Wells Valley since 1971. And whereas the Richcrest Kiwanis Club has planned a local observance of the National Prayer Breakfast at Desert Christian Center on the morning of Thursday, May 4. And whereas this year, our community and the whole nation face challenges that call for our most solemn and reverent concern for deep wisdom and acute perception and for the rewarded spiritual strength in our approach to these challenges. And whereas the City of Richcrest recognizes these challenges, the need for spiritual strength, and the efficacy of the prayers of many faiths. Now therefore, be proclaimed, the Richcrest City Council does hereby proclaim that the City of Richcrest joins in the observance of the National Prayer Day and Mayor's Prayer Breakfast in the morning of Thursday, May 4, 2023, and urges all citizens to participate wholeheartedly in this event. Proclaimed this third day of May, 2023, signed by Mayor Eric Bruin, Vice Mayor Kyle Blades, Councilmember Scott Hayman, Councilmember John Skip Gorman, and myself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
The National Day of Prayer, 72 years in the running. Richcrest is in its 28th year of honoring the National Day of Prayer. Kiwanis Club of Richcrest has made that one of the top priorities. At Desert Christian Center tomorrow at 6:15, Casey will be doing the breakfast, and the program begins at 6:30 and out at 7:45. Thank you very much.
Can I take a picture up front?
Yeah.
Can I take a picture up front with this? You get to see me tomorrow morning anyway.
See if we can get one on there.
Ready? No, they don't like, he doesn't like to take pictures.
No, I'm talking about tomorrow morning.
Oh, you're gonna be, I'll be there. There you go.
I've got his name tag ready. Thank you. Thank you. See you in the morning. See you in the morning. Nice seeing you. Good.
No, no, you're all right.
So it's my honor to present the proclamation for the National Police Week. The, I would submit that every community, the backbone of how they operate, their safety, economics, all really ties back to the police department, how well it's ran, the trust, you know, the trust in public, the aspects, I could go on and on, and if you're involved in the police department, you understand this deeply. It's your life, you live it. And we, we, the city council, and I think I can speak for the whole entire community, are proud of you. So I wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that I, that I said a few things before reading the proclamation about how proud, how proud I personally am of this PD, the progression, the, you know, I grew up in this town. I'm a, I'm a local, as the, as the new, the new ESTP say on base. I am, I'm a townie, and I can tell you that this, this PD, unlike, well, I'll be honest, unlike other communities, this PD instills confidence and trust and respect in its, in its citizens. We, we see you, we know who the PD is, and even if it's a harsh circumstance, you're fair and just and do what needs to be done. And I think that's all that, I think it's all that a community can ask for, and I think that's what's important. You're pillars of the community, and I salute, salute all of you. Thank you. A proclamation of the City of Richcrest, California, Richcrest honors National Police Week, May 14 through the 20th, 2023. Whereas the members of Richcrest Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the City of Richcrest. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people of the community by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Richcrest Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, the Richcrest City Council does hereby proclaim May 14 through May 20, 2023, as Police Week. And the City of Richcrest, in honor of the law enforcement officers, past and present, who have rendered a dedicated service to the community, and do further proclaim May 15, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made their ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Proclaimed this third day of May, 2023, by Mayor Eric Bruin, Mr. Solomon Rajarothnum, Mr. Skip Gorman, and Mr. Scott Hayman, and myself. Thank you.
If you're in uniform, you're accepting this.
Sorry. Thank you.
At least both of you. Or at least you're taking a picture. If you're in uniform, you're taking a picture.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. We're gonna have.
Right there. Yeah, cool. Let's get big group. Thank you. Yep. We're at three of five. Now you're up.
Yep, Cap, you're up.
First off, I want to thank Councilman Blades for his kind words. He is absolutely correct. You guys do have a great police department. It's because of the members of the police department, but most of all, it's because of the support of this community and the support of this council. And we are lucky to live and work in this community, so I thank all the guys in the department, and I thank all of you. So, thank you. So being at the Richcrest Police Department, the, the officers, the men and women who serve, they see a lot of crazy stuff, horrendous stuff. People don't call us because they're having a great day. They call us because they're having usually the worst day they have of their life. I mean, everything from horrific, you know, car accidents, child abuse, to seeing pictures of grown men in nurses' uniforms. And some things are just really bad, trust me. But one of the ways that we as officers are able to get through these traumatic days is being able to confide and talk to people who understand life and who can help keep us grounded, both emotionally and spiritually. Could Pastor Thomas come up here, please? Thank you, sir. Pastor Thomas, Chaplain Thomas, has been with us for many, many years, and when any of us had a bad day, he was available for us to talk to. He's able to keep us grounded where we need to be. It's people like Pastor Thomas that allows us to do this job for this community and to support all you guys. Unfortunately, today is Pastor Thomas's last day as a chaplain with us. After 18 years, 17 years? 18 years, you know, so he deserves a break and he deserves a vacation. So you got that, vacation? He's got it. Sorry. Turn it over to Nathan here. Go ahead.
I've worked with Pastor Thomas, call him Eddie, since I took over the program in 2016, and he's always come when I've called. And he will be missed with our agency, and for small token of our appreciation to it, we appreciate it, sir. Oh, yeah. Can you give us a, one of your sermons? Last, last aparting sermon, sir?
A sermon?
Yeah.
He asked for a sermon, and for those who do not know, I passed to the church for 30 years here in Richcrest, so you wouldn't want to go through 45 minutes of me screaming and yelling at you, so I'll just want to say thank you to this outstanding city. I have served here for 18 years, and it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve. And I can remember when Sergeant Myers was here that recruited me. I sat in my office at the church and used to complain about what the city is not doing and what they should be doing, and he and our now city manager, Mr. Strand, challenged me one day to say, "Hey, instead of you complaining, why don't you get involved?" And as a result of that, I started with Measure L, the Oversight Committee, then served as city council, and moved on to become a chaplain. And I am honored to serve with great men and women here in this community, and I thank God for my family that released me and let me go to this city, and I appreciate all that you guys do, and I pray that you will be successful in all that you do in this great city. Thank you, and God bless you.
That's right. We gotta take pictures. You weren't councilman, you know how this works. We take lots of pictures. Come take pictures, Eddie.
Do Americans most wanted, I wanted to take one. That's right. This is the original soup that I had, and I am holding my breath.
So I also run as a woman's salary dues. I run the Explorer Program for the City of Richcrest. It's a opportunity for the youth to come in and see how the police department functions. You have to be from 12 to 21 years old. I have some of my, my youngins here, put them in the uniform, and they've come. It's, not only do they get to see what inside of the police department is, they also get to be taught life lessons, help them with their school, and where they might even go in life. Well, I believe that I have the best job in the city, and this is a great career. Sometimes, you know, they go on and be smart people like doctors and bankers. So what we do is every year, we select a Explorer of the Year for that, and this year was selected by my advisors. It's my little brother, Steven Lloyd. Come up, Steven. You want to say something? The next two, well, I have a retirement and I have a, one, so let's do my retirement.
Kiana Lee? Come on out.
You can clap, it's all good.
So Kiana Lee was started out as a Explorer with the Richcrest Police Department when she was a, well, younger, young in one. And then as she aged out of the program, she became a advisor, what we call them. And what that do is they help teach the lessons, get them ready, kind of my right-hand man. As she is now moving into transitioning to law enforcement, she just completed the Level 3 of the Reserve Program. She's focusing on her career, and we are retiring her, if you will, from the Explorer Program. She'll still be around with the department. So I got you a plaque. I appreciate all your, your hard work. I know you got a speech for me.
No, I don't.
No. Agent Jim Song. Agent Song is employed by NCIS from the base. He's came here in 2000, where he joined the, came to China Lake Station, and then he comes, and he's been my other right hand and assist with the program. He's been there every day. Basically, he does it for free. He comes in and he mentors the children, talks to them on the federal law enforcement side. He has prior military experience and has been a really big help to me and to the Ridgecrest Police Department to let these officers or these explorers see this side. And so, for all your hard work in twenty-three. Sir, I appreciate your service. Appreciate it.
Folks, again, Jimmy Song from NCIS, been here since 2020, helping out with the Explorer Program. Surprised by the award. I'm humbled by it. I'm just glad to be part of the community and be able to contribute as we're all members of the community, and so that way we could help improve the quality of life around here. Thank you very much.
Can we ask all the award recipients? And would you like the explorers or just the award recipient? What would you like?
Bring everybody up, sir.
Bring everybody up. Bring everybody up. My award recipients are right here. If I can ask everyone to give us a round of applause on all of our award recipients. Thank you, guys. And now, we will return. We're going to allow a brief moment for those that are here for the presentations to go ahead and exit before we begin our regular city business. Once again, thank you to everyone who is here. This is what makes Ridgecrest so wonderful. Thank you again to everyone who was here this evening. We appreciate your participation, and we really appreciate our recipients. Next item on our agenda is our public comment section. Public comment of items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Council will not respond to any public comments, but may provide direction to staff to collect information. Pursuant to the Brown Acts, the City Council may not act on an item that does not appear on this agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes, and the public comment section of the agenda is limited to one hour. Speakers are asked to provide his or her name, and I will begin with a call for speakers from the floor. Is there any public comment from the floor? Seeing none, I don't believe there's any public comment on the phones. I'll allow a few seconds for anybody who'd like to call in and comment. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward with our next item on our agenda, which is the council announcements and direction. We'll go ahead and go right to left. Mr. Gorman, any announcements? Mr. Heyman?
Done.
Solomon?
Again, National Day of Prayer tomorrow at Desert Community Center, and that is Christian Center, I'm sorry, at six-thirty, I think. So, all are welcome for that. And then, China Lake Museum Dinner and Auction on the sixth, which is the Saturday at 3:00 P.M. So, that's all I have.
Nothing.
Nothing? My only one is, again, I just want to reiterate my deep appreciation to everyone in the community that came out on Friday night and Saturday night to the Ridgecrest Star Follies, and more importantly, to the sixty volunteers who gave of their time, hours, dancing on stage to help raise funds for our local Chamber of Commerce. It was a great event. We were a packed house in Joshua Hall at the Desert Empire Fairgrounds. Thank you to the staff of the Desert Empire Fairgrounds, especially Andy Anderson, who really worked so hard to help us have a great event. And then, so many of the other volunteers. It was my honor to recognize Janice, but there are so many people that make that event incredibly powerful. And a little shout out to Mr. Don Hertel, who twenty years ago encouraged me to dance on that stage. And of course, former mayor and councilwoman Peggy Breeden, who dragged me there one month into this town. I'd been here for one month, and they got me on that stage. And my life has been changed since then. So, that, also the China Lake Museum Auction, which is this weekend, another great event here at Kerr McGee. And then, finally, I wanted to thank the community members that came out last night to our Sergeant Penny Pool Second Town Hall. We're making great progress on the pool. We are going to have that back to our community here by 2025. But thank you for the positivity and the great comments and all of the excitement that we're hearing from our community. It's so rewarding to see and hear that the good things that we're doing are reiterating and being reverberated outside of these chambers to our community members, in that we're going to continue to build Ridgecrest the way we've been hoping for for so many years. Okay, next is our consent calendar. We have one item on our consent calendar. All matters listed in the consent calendar are considered routine and enacted within a single motion. If no member or council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions, if comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered enlisted sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the City Council concerning the item before action is taken. Our one item today is proposed action to approve the draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council Regular Meeting dated April 5, 2023, and April 19, 2023. Is there any person who wishes to have the item polled? Seeing none, do I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar as presented? Oh, I'm sorry. Does any member of the public wish to have the item polled? My apologies? Seeing none, do I have, seeing no items to be polled, do I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Councilman Gorman?
Aye.
Councilman Heyman?
Aye.
Councilman Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Councilman Blades?
Aye.
Five ayes. Motion carries.
Now, this is the odd part. The odd part is that normally, following consent calendar, we would start our regular discussion items and proposals. This month, there is none. And I want to explain for just briefly why there's none, which is because we are dedicated in the background, working right now on our budget. We have multiple things coming up, and we'll be... I did that earlier. There was none. Yeah, already covered. Sorry, just double checking. And so, what I wanted to make sure that I covered was, our staff is obviously very, very busy, working on many, many projects. And although you may not see something today, that means that they're probably getting us preloaded for a whole bunch coming. And I could tell you that that means the May meeting probably will be much busier with different items. So, with that, I have, we have no proposals or discussion items on the agenda this evening. We'll go ahead and move immediately to committee reports. And I don't see Megan. Is somebody able to provide the RACVB report? Or we'll go ahead and move to the other ones and see if she's here, okay? So, Infrastructure Committee.
Yep. We did meet on the 23rd of March. No, that's the wrong one. Hold on. Give me a second. Where's my notes? There we go. Twenty-seventh of April. So, we had some public comment. Travis did address all of those comments, and they were just, they were mostly questions about Parks and Rec, which I'm sure he took over somewhere else. And we talked about traffic studies, talking about the new control around Downs and Drummond, a demo for a new Argos system that is still being evaluated by the Public Works Department, so we could leave that there. That was, that was, that was the gist, I think, as far as I had it. It wasn't a whole lot to discuss. So, that's it for Infrastructure Committee. Solomon doesn't have anything. We can move on to Economic Development.
Well, I just want to go ahead and take the moment during infrastructure to say one thing, which is, hey, Trav, and your entire department, I know you're tearing it up, and we love seeing it, guys. It is nothing but compliments. Have I been seeing and hearing about the amount of roadwork that they are seeing pouring into our community? Outside of people then go, well, is that it? Are they going to do more? What's next? And I think people have to understand there's differences in how we do roads. Slurry seal is different than resurfacing. And the only other one that I want to make sure everyone's aware of is I've gotten many people that says, well, you only did half of Ward. Well, that's true, because from a budget and grant perspective and all the other things that we have to do, Ward Phase Two is next year, people, so... Look at that. And so, Mr. Reed, come on, there's not a microphone for everyone to hear what you just said, because I didn't know that, and you're telling me some awesome news.
So, we reached out to Kern Cog, due to some other cities that were having trouble with some right-of-way stuff, and asked if we could advance the funding for Ward Phase Two, to which that was granted. So, Ward Phase Two is now funded. We're waiting on a PSA and our thirty-day waiting period for our SEQA, and then we will put that out to bid. And that's part of the reason why you saw all the sewer work get done with Phase One. That's what we were hoping would happen, so...
That's awesome. So, anybody who is driving on West Ward Avenue and knows about the dip, we're getting close.
So, all the dips. We're reprofiling. Yeah, we're going to reprofile about two hundred feet either way on Norma, so you can drive through the intersection of Norma at the speed limit. We're reprofiling Sierra View, so that way you can drive through Sierra View at full speed. We're fixing the water issue we have on Downs. We're fixing the undercrossings at Sierra View. We're doing work on the undercrossings at Norma, so we're hoping to have Ward to where it's tip-top.
Nothing better I could have heard. Thank you, Travis. Okay, Economic Development.
Yeah, you bet. So, Solomon, if you can think of anything that I missed, let me know. We discussed, we had four different items, but we can sum them all up pretty quick. You have several members from the committee, myself and Mr. Bill Ferris Jr. and City Manager Ron Strand, going to the ICSE Conference. That will be mid-May downtown Balsam, so that we do consider the Night on Balsam events as part of economic development, because we're trying to get to keep the energy moving in that area of the town. So, there's definitely some efforts there on behalf of the city staff. And if anybody has any questions for me, they can always reach out, and we can dig down further. And we talk about recruitment and development updates, but really, we didn't have too much changing there from the last couple committees, so... Committee meetings, and that's all I really have. Solomon, you have anything? Nope.
Thank you, sir. The next one was Parks, Rec, and Quality of Life. Again, I covered that earlier. We had our second town hall on the rebuilding of Sergeant Penny Pool and the progress that's being made. If anybody's interested, feel free to reach out. We'll be happy to share with you any of the materials from the event. We'll be having another town hall, probably early, mid-June is what we're thinking, and we'll have another opportunity to show where the progress is going. But bottom line is, progress is absolutely continuing to roll forward. Our goal here is to have these plans into construction docks by July, so that we can be breaking ground by early 2024. So, we're still very much on track. That was the entire meeting. We'll have a regular Quality of Life meeting in June, okay? Megan, RACVB?
If I may, right before Megan starts?
Sure.
I said a member of the public asked me what the number to call in is. And I don't see, and I don't see it on my agenda.
Four-nine-nine, fifty-one-ten.
Yep. It's on the bottom of the first page. It's seven, just for the sake of calling that.
Fifty-ten, I'm sorry.
Yeah, seven-six-zero-four-nine-nine-fifty-ten is the call-in number.
Sorry about that, Megan.
No, you're all good. I apologize. I was a little bit late. I did not expect Mayor Bruin to be so quick today. Thought I had a little bit, a little bit of window, but I heard you mention my name, and I booked it for the elevator. Anyway, so I'm here to do the RACVB report. We did meet on the twenty-sixth, and we discussed a few different things. So, a lot of it was kind of event recap. They did have the Run with Burrows event the weekend prior, which saw a boost in our occupancy, as a hundred and forty-five entries were there for that event, and only twenty-nine were local to the IWV area. So, we saw quite a boost in our out-of-town visitors for that specific event. The Bitwell One Hundred, Built Well, excuse me, was another racing event that was, happened over the weekend, and there is potential to work with the RACVB to try and expand that into a two-day race event. So, we have a little bit more heads and beds associated with that as well. We're continuing to work on, working with the fairgrounds to improve the venue for other community events out at the fairgrounds, like rodeo. They did have to postpone the Film and Radio Conference due to impending screenwriter strike, but there's still a lot of filming going on, the fam tour, which is a tour for the producers and site scouts to come out and get familiar with the area for filming requests. That was pushed back, but it has been confirmed for later this year in October, the thirteenth to the sixteenth. And that will cover Ridgecrest to Lone Pine to Death Valley. So, they have a three-day, I believe, visit planned to show them around our local area. In April, filming was good. We had four productions, and it was also translated to room nights as well, which isn't always the case. But we did see a slight dip in the demand for occupancy, but the revenue stayed fairly steady. And we think that the boost in certain periods for demand was due to the filming, so that's good. For May filming, we do have two productions scheduled at the time of the meeting, so it looks like that's going to continue to go good. One thing I did want to touch on was the petroglyph tours. I know, Skip, you were interested in the potential for that. So, last update I have is, according to the discussions with the installation, the ideal plan is to open the tours by spring of 2024. It would be a bit of a reduced access, more like eight tours per season, focused around spring and fall seasons. And they are, the RACVB is trying to work with the base to potentially try to get a little bit of earlier access for the petroglyph festival in November of this year, 2023. So, nothing's confirmed on that to date, but hopefully, we'll have some good luck and be able to get that in, especially with the petroglyph tour being on an anniversary date. Would be really nice to have the tours involved in that. And while I'm on the subject of petroglyphs, the Petroglyph Education Foundation is actively looking for passionate people who have the time and willingness, availability to get involved. They really want to focus on the cultural importance of the tribes to the region, and Ridgecrest especially. So, anybody who's interested in that, feel free to reach out to me or the RACVB, and we can get you connected with that group. One other thing, just a little offside note, is Hampton Inn will be having thirty rooms offline for renovations coming in July first. So, just a little FYI for that. And there will be a Veterans Business Bureau event on the seventeenth of this month, and that will be the Chambers event. But they let us know RACVB, so I just wanted to share that as well. Any questions?
You had a special meeting today. Is there something that can be shared or no?
We have a special meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow at 1:00 P.M.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Briefly, forgive my latency in coming to the microphone.
I was late as well. Hi, forgive me.
Hi, forgive me.
The alternate site idea, did that gain any traction?
So, I did pass along your recommendations to Carrie and she's the executive director with the RACVB and she put that in her portfolio for consideration. I think we're still holding out hope that it'll work out with the base to get the tours back on at... Sorry. I believe it's Little Petroglyph Canyon. I am getting the canyons confused, but the main tour site with the base. So, we're hoping that will work out, but we're always welcome to continue to explore options. So, I will continue to pass along anything to Carrie for consideration.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm going to go a little off-agenda just slightly, which is we were contacted up here that there was a member of the public that was trying to reach out to us and did not have the phone. I do see we have a caller on there. I'm going to allow for a moment for that caller to have the opportunity to make public comment. If it leads into more public comment, we'll take it from there. But can I have, go ahead and give the caller the opportunity to state your name and you're on the clock for the same five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Scott Miller here. I have to agree, we love all the roadwork that's happening in town. It's awesome. However, it would be awesome if we could have some sort of, I'm going to use the term thermometer of where we're at with said roadwork. You're just talking about Ward, I think, and you may have already addressed this. I couldn't hear when I was on hold. But where we're at is a high level of part A, part B, part C, part D, going all the way up. So, the public has an idea of actually what's happening. As we know, in the mornings, it's been really difficult in the morning driving down China Lake. And when will that end? And if we had a way that we could see that, that would be phenomenal. Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense.
You can answer that, never mind. Sorry, forgot you guys can answer that. Anyway, and I can't see you right now. So, that's all I had really to say is I think having something on the web and then promoting, hey, let's see where we're at with this particular project. I think you talked briefly about paving and slurry. So, having those action items on the site that, in my world, it seems easy to do, but you know, my world is a little different anyway. But that's just what I had to say. Thanks very much for your help and your time. Thanks, guys. Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. We are working continuously towards making some better communications. And one of the things I could tell you that we're working on behind the scenes, we don't have anything in stone yet, but it's been an active effort of both myself and Councilman Blades, is that we would like to deliver a City of Ridgecrest application to our citizens here shortly that would allow for you to have that kind of direct interaction with the city, especially in terms of, hey, if we have to close something, you can have a notification or something that you can choose to be notified or not to be notified.
So, in that vein, I've been extremely remiss. I missed briefing you guys on something important that happened at the Economic Development. My apologies, Mr. Mayor, for going out of order. We, the committee, heard a demo from a company called Placer AI. And Placer AI is a company that they collect data through applications. So, if you have your cellphone turned on, location services enabled in certain apps, this company is grabbing hold of that data and using it to provide information to various companies throughout the world. Now, if that gives you pause, I understand. And I have asked the company to make sure they provide us with a statement of legally like this, we are not trampling on anybody's freedoms. This is stuff that's already there. We're not usurping anybody's rights. So, they understand that. Now, moving forward, how would we use it? We would use it to be pointed for economic development. See where we're bleeding, where we're losing money, where we're losing business. To give an example, we asked as a demo to provide a report on what the last Night on Balsam looked like. What was the traffic count? Was the demographics of people who were there? What hours were they there? When did they leave? What restaurants did they go to after and before? Where did they park to walk down? It was great. It was good data that you could see our department using, well, several departments within the city staff. You could see the RACVB using it. So, again, it's a company called Placer AI. We're going to speak to them again. We go to ICSE. And... Oh, you're probably waiting for the number. It was somewhere around 4,000 people. Somewhere around 4,000 people, which Ron guessed it. It was, he was pretty close to the amount of people who were on that first Night on Balsam we just had. So, anyways, it could be very useful for us. I was encouraging. I like the idea of using it. If that data, if you're already giving that data up, we might as well use it to try and fix holes within the community. If you guys have any questions for me, I've been through several of the demonstrations, so ask away.
Well, it'd be a contract that would come back to council for full discussion at some point, right?
Well, not necessarily. We could discuss it all you want, but really, it's within Ron's purview.
It's within Ron's purview, okay.
Now, if you, it's your prerogative, if you decide that you want to bring it here just for, you know, discussion's sake. But we had a pretty active and lively discussion within the committee. I've talked with the city manager about it. So, really, it's over to the city staff.
I think that's the power of the committees. The committees give direction and...
And I like the idea of leaving a lot of power with the committees and not having to drag everything up to the council.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we are looking at bringing that to the council during the budget process to let you know what our intent is. So, you'll get it. We'll brief you of why we want it, what the purpose is, and then be part of the budget process.
Thank you. Thanks for continuing to look for new ways. I got to personally tell you that I think this is just another example of, you know, this thing. I was, I was, I was, sorry, I'm going to go on a story. I'm going to go on a skip story. Is I was saying at the Follies, one of the things that I thought was so funny is last time I had done it, this wasn't in everybody's pocket in the same way, nowhere even close to it. And how many different pictures and videos and everything else I got that I have a record of Follies that I don't have any record of 2004 to 2011? Because this wasn't as predominantly in your pocket in the same way. And it leads back to my point is that if this is going to be a predominant instrument in everyone's pocket and we don't utilize the technology to the best advantage of our community, then we're foolishly leaving technology on the sidelines that can help us run and create a better community. And that's knowing what is happening with events like that. I would love to know how many people went to restaurants after Night on Balsam. I'd love to know, just even if I just had the statistic for each of our individual big events like that, to be able to say, you know, hey, Desert Empire Fairgrounds, did you know that 4,000 people came to your event from 100-mile radius around? And things like that. Incredible.
It helps. And the software will show that to you. If you have people coming from different areas, like basically you cast a geofence. But you can zoom out as much as you'd like. I mean, you can see that people travel from the East Coast to do work here and then go to Starbucks. And I mean, this is all data that you can grab and collect. And most people, there's some apps on your phones. You have to have the location services on, so that's just the way it works. People are giving that data away. We might as well figure out a way to use it to the benefit of the community. It is not for, there's nothing negative about it. And I can't imagine that the city staff, whatever, use it in any negative way. Not that there is even a way to do that. The company's a pretty stand-up company. Tehachapi uses them. They've been using them for a while and we've asked them a lot of questions and they're very pleased with their implementation and how they use it, so.
And all the data is not, we're not getting that Jim Smith was there. It's all anonymous data. It's all generalized demographics and participation data.
You can just see that certain age ranges were here. You can see all kinds of demographic information, so.
But it doesn't say Bob Smith was here. It's nothing specific to individuals.
No, I mean, people's privacy is still in that way, still protected. So, do you guys have any other questions?
If we were sitting over a glass of red wine on Balsam someday chatting about this, I would ask, this outfit you just mentioned has AI in its title.
Good, yeah, sure.
I'm getting suspicious of AI. I see that because...
Welcome company.
It may be this company will offer clever data manipulation and make it comprehensive. But I think we'd have to opt in by allowing our phones to tell that company where we are. I hope that that's the way. I don't, we don't have to opt out to avoid it.
Yeah, the only way that it works right now, because I asked a pointed question, how do you get your data that we're using? We get our data through a third party. We go to companies that already are gathering and scraping that data off of your phone. And there's some apps that everybody has on their phone that location services are already there. So, that services will tell, you know, gives them a lot of what they need to know. So, it's...
That technology is, it is exciting. I love chatting about it. But next time you talk to them, ask them if, after all the data's collected and cross-checked and whether or not their machine, whether or not their machine would offer a joke about it or the extent to which they'll find irony in what they're seeing and suggest an efficiency of next time around. That way, they'd be earning the AI in their title.
Roger that.
So, I want to thank you. This was all committee reports. I do want to address, there was another caller called in. I apologize, I'm not going to take the call because I don't want to get in trouble with my attorney. I gave the opportunity because we were contacted in the middle and I gave plenty of pause. I apologize. If the caller would like to contact, the city council will be happy to speak with you about whatever your concern is.
Or whoever it is, contact me personally.
Contact us, we'll be happy to speak with you. Apologies, I'm not going to run off-agenda further. That gets me into brown act trouble and that just is not what I'm going to open that door with. Next would be other committees, boards or commissions.
I have the East Kern Pollution Board tomorrow.
I don't have anybody else? Any other reports? Nope. Okay. City Manager report?
Yes, just briefly. As you know, our budget hearing was scheduled for May 24th at 7:30. I may be asking the council if we could change that date because that's the date that I'm going to be up in Sacramento at the California Defense Community Summit. And there's a good reason for me to be up there in regards to supporting the California DCIP grant. So, I'll have Rick reach out to you guys next week, if that's okay, and see if we can find another date so I can attend that event. So, and the other thing was, and you kind of already got into it, you already called Travis up. I was already getting ready to call Travis up to give council at least a brief update of where we're at with our road projects, just so the council and the community can know. Travis, do you mind stepping up, please?
I did. I sat at the wrong seat. I just hope the thumbnail is not my bald head this time like it was the last.
I can see that. It is. Just capture that.
So, just wanted to give you guys a brief update on where we're at with some of our projects. We talked about Ward. Ward's about 95% done. We've got a couple of few issues with lining manholes that we got to deal with. We've got one fix where a trench sunk a little bit that we've got a 60-foot by roughly 45-foot full with a section we're going to take out and redo and repave. That's why it hasn't been striped yet. And then we're full steam ahead on Ward Phase Two. As far as chip seal is done, we're about 95% done with chip seal. All the chips are down. Fog seals are done. Temp striping is down. We're looking at final signage next, early next week and final striping all week ongoing. And then that project will be 100% done. Franklin Avenue is 99.99999% done. We're doing a couple minor improvements still. We're going to fog seal one area on Farragut, I believe. And then we are also installing two more survey monuments that got missed. With that, we will complete Franklin Avenue project. Happy to report chip seal is going to come in just a tiny bit, even with what we added over budget, not anywhere near close to the total contingency that council authorized. Franklin Avenue used a little bit of the contingency for some reprofiling we had to do on Mahan and some of the surveying that I wanted to change. But that one will also come in significantly under what we had for contingency. One of the other things, item of note, is the Wildland Inspectors did a great job for us in covering multiple projects. So, we are significantly under budget on our construction engineering. So, with that, I talked to City Manager Strand and I talked with Cherie based on the projections that we saw with Measure V. I have been adding in a lot of the concrete improvements that we deleted from the FY22 Measure V project. We haven't added in the two roads. We're still looking at that for next year, maybe, depending on budget. That would be Fairview and Reeves. Fairview from Felspar to Drummond and Reeves from Inyo to Mahan. On Inyo, is it Inyo? Yeah, it is Inyo. But right now, roughly, we added a dig out on Downs. And with all the concrete improvements we've put back in, we've added in close to about 600 grand worth of work on that project. So, we're moving full steam ahead with that. Griffith has been way ahead of schedule. It's been great to work with them and it's kind of been a breath of fresh air. So, as far as roadwork that's completed thus far, Warner is 90% done. We still have manholes to raise, survey monuments to raise, some minor striping that goes at the Ridgecrest Boulevard end and some minor striping that goes at the Church Street end. Albert is paved, all the cross gutter work, repair work and stuff like that. So, you can actually drive through. It's done. We've got some minor striping still to do on that. Vera is completed. Sierra Vista is completed, other than striping. The first half of Peg is complete, other than striping. So, that is from Los Flores to Vera. We had two grinders in today. We completed the milling on Peg Street from Los Flores to Felspar. And we milled Graff and we milled Purdue. Concrete improvements are, we authorized Saturday work because that was the only time we could get a curb machine to do all the concrete improvements on Reeves. Curbs went in today on Atkins. So, we are full steam ahead in Phase Three of our paving. We're going to pave tomorrow and Friday on Peg and Purdue and possibly Graff, depending on how things go. We've got some inclement weather that is forecasted in Lebec, which is where all the asphalt's coming from. So, depending on that, we'll depend on if we pave tomorrow. We're a little worried about temperatures, but that's a means and methods thing that we're going to leave up to Griffith. And if they think they can get it here with the temperatures right, we're going to blow and go. Reeves is stripped, we stripped it two weeks ago from just past Wayne up to China Lake Boulevard. We've been in steady contact with Caltrans. Both the cross gutters and the ramps at Graff and Reeves and the Caltrans right-of-way are completed. And we're hoping to, once we get all the curb in, sidewalk in and things like that, we're hoping to strip the remaining portion of Reeves, which would be from Wayne to Norma, jump across Norma and do Norma from there to the new asphalt, which is about halfway in between Sierra View. We've got some concrete improvements we're doing there, too. And then we'll move on to Phase Four of the project, which is where we do the whole Mesquite area, Mesquite, Palo Verde, Sage, Wayne, that beautiful neighborhood over there right behind Starbucks. It's been in dire need of some much TLC. And then thereafter, we'll finish up and hit Wasp Coral and Wild Rose. And then that, we're hoping to have everything completed before mid-August. So, all three of our major paving projects will be complete. As you guys know, you awarded the HSIP project. The HSIP project contract documents are in. I would expect to issue a notice to proceed within the next week or so. And then we'll be full steam ahead on some signal upgrades, arterial flashing stop signs and crosswalk upgrades. So, we're moving right along. We're about 90% designed on our Bowman Channel and Norma intersection work. So, that'll be another one we're putting out here shortly and then on to next year and all the fun stuff that we've got planned for that.
Yeah, just as a matter of clarification, that extra $600,000 in flat work will be brought back to council in two weeks for your approval. So...
Well, I've been seeing the curb and gutter work going in and I went, that means he started knocking down some of the... For those of you who haven't heard from Infrastructure previously, we have some 88 things that we need to get done. And I know you're checking them off and knocking stuff down, so we appreciate it.
Yeah, so with these projects we've done this year, with those projects alone, we'll have done over 88 curb turn ramps, so.
That's huge.
It's a huge number.
Just out of curiosity, since you're reporting, did we do the one over Pearson yet?
The one over at Pearson got demoed and removed Monday. I don't know if the pourback has been completed yet, but I would assume... I don't know if the pourback has been completed yet, but I would assume it probably got, it's either going to, it either got poured back today, or it'll get poured back tomorrow.
So, Mr. Corlett, thank you, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Hopefully we were able to deliver on that, that commitment, so we appreciate it.
Did you mention College Heights Road?
So College Heights was part of our chip seal project that we're 90 some odd percent done on, so it's College Heights, China Lake Boulevard.
It's impressive, I was, I had gone up it like two days before. It was, as it always has been, and then, like that Wednesday went up, and I was like, wow. It's impressive what's going on, so, good job.
Thank you, sir, I, the whole staff has been great, less than his crew have been second to none with facilitating some needs. One other thing I'd like to mention too, is just, we're trying to kill as many birds as we can with one stone. We're going to be taking some of the grindings, as, as you guys all know, we took some to the baseball fields to make a parking lot, we've still been taking some. I needed to get rid of them, the fairgrounds is plum full with grindings, with how much we've been doing. And I got a call last week from the Moose Lodge, and they said, hey, if you guys have any grindings and you're close and you want to get rid of them, let us know. So they got 25 loads for their parking lot area. And then when we bring the grinder back the next time, I'm going to start taking loads to the alleyways that need some love, so we can fill the holes and blade them off that are dirt, and make them nice to drive on. And then hopefully, once we get caught up with our slurry, go slurry over the top of those too, just so that way it's a decent surface, that's easier for us to maintain.
That's awesome, it keeps the dust down too, and then, what was it, I had one other, one other, oh, on Mahan, you mentioned next year, is Mahan discussions geared toward?
So Mahan will be, Mahan is, we are applying for the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Grant for that. I'm currently in the process of obtaining count data and doing the grant application, if we are successful on that application, I will probably end up bringing it back to council and asking for additional funding to fund the design side, so we can put all the money towards the construction side. I spoke with the representative from Kern County that sits on the T-TAC Committee with me, and they seem to be in support of allowing us to utilize 10 feet of their right-of-way, so we can actually get two full lanes and a parking shoulder on our side. So, once we get, if we're successful with that funding, you would see that break ground in either '25 or '26, depending on when it gets programmed. So, and then the other stuff that we're applying for is our RSTP, which is what is doing Ward. And we're going to apply to do some work on Los Flores from China Lake Boulevard, where the huge transverse cracks are to Norma, and try to finish that segment out from Downs to Mahan.
All I can say is yay, nothing else to say, I mean, loved hearing it.
Thanks, sir, absolutely.
One more item, there's going to be a special planning commission meeting on Monday at 5 o'clock to go over the housing element. I do believe this is our second meeting regarding that. So just give council a fly on that, if you have any questions, Heather's here.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda is future agenda items, is there any council members that have a future agenda item? Okay, hearing done, mayor and council comments, we'll go ahead and start left with Kyle and work right.
Just once again, we gave out a lot of proclamations today, but to express my appreciation for, for the police department, the PD we have here, and I think the longer you're, if you've, if you've served in a seat like we are, if you're elected, you, you get to intimately know the various departments and what they do, what they don't, you know, positives, shortcomings, how things work, you know, how they, how they don't work in our city and other communities. And I can tell you that we have a very good city staff, our departments work like they should. We have a city manager that communicates very well up and down, up and down the chain. Things happen how they should, and not every community can say that. It's nice to sit up here as a city council, and I, I have complete faith that, I mean, there's, there's not much that we, we're lucky up here, there's not much we really have to worry about. It's usually already thought of, long, long before it gets to us, and even if there is sometimes a complaint from the public, by the time I turn around and ask the city manager, it's already been thought about, or it's already been taken care of, or there's a reason. But I did, I did want to just focus, this is police week and say, thank you, Captain Dan Pierre, and thank you to the PD. It's, the police departments are a hot topic across the United States right now. I can't speak for the rest of the world, but it's something that everybody, it's on the tip of their tongues. And I can't stress enough how, how good of a PD we have, how, how each of these officers, they approach things with, with compassion and humility. Even when, I, I can tell you that as a, as a regular civilian, I don't know that I could. I've, I sat, just a couple of weeks ago, I sat in Schooners, eating lunch, watching out the window as there was basically a domestic disturbance going on right outside the gas station. Everybody, the whole entire restaurant was watching. And in, and everybody could have, could have said it, you know, PD's coming any minute, any minute, and sure enough, the PD showed up. But instead of the situation escalating, instead of there being some kind of a negative consequence, the officer stood there for a long time, talking with both of the people. The whole situation calmed down. The officer then took time to jumpstart the vehicle they were in, got them going in separate directions, and what could have been a very bad day for somebody, what could have altered their life forever, turned into a positive interaction. And I'm, I'm willing to say that was one moment, that was one moment out of, out of the day, out of the amount of calls. Captain, what would you say, 60 to 70 calls per day during the day, just during the day, the amount of calls that come at just a small amount of police officers? So, they're out there working hard, and they're doing it with, they're doing it with grace. So, thank you.
Just wanted to say, mayor spoke at Rotary Club of China Lake today. The reason I'm pointing that is, people should know what is happening in this community, what are the various steps we are taking to make this a better place to live, so. They were all very enthusiastic, very appreciative for what the city is doing, so thank you, mayor, for sharing that information. And the credit goes to the city staff, city manager, and Public Works Director, Finance Director Cherie, Parks and Recs Narissa, so you are all doing a good job, so. That makes us, that puts us in a better position, so that we can face the community and tell them this is what is happening in this community, so. Thank you very much for what are you doing, I appreciate that.
Thanks, sir, Scott?
I just want to add, the, the Pool Town Hall was, what, was it yesterday?
Yeah.
Yeah, just yesterday, but it's really exciting to see the preliminary designs and the work that's being done on the pool so far, the design engineers are going to be coming back in a month, approximately.
Probably five weeks, but, early June.
And they'll have things a little more fine-tuned, so I urge the public and anyone that's excited about the pool to come and, come and attend those meetings, so it's, it's good, good, good stuff, so.
Thank you. Skip?
Briefly, Travis, in the most non-metaphorical way, you are where the rubber meets the road. Congratulations, it's all very impressive. As, as was the Follies, it was my first experience, took my breath away. Also listening, I'll follow up on Kyle's comments about the presentations earlier in the meeting. I was thinking of an old Rudyard Kipling poem about Tommy, in fact, that's the name of the poem. Tommy Atkins, a British soldier. And wonderfully lyrical poem, you're invited, those who are listening and, and hear. Follow your nose through Google perhaps, and find Rudyard Kipling's poem about Tommy. He gave birth to the phrase, "A thin red line of heroes" that metastasized over time, at least in America, to the thin blue line of heroes, as we were talking about our police, which now more than ever stand between chaos and order. My appreciation of them rivals Kyle's. I get goosebumps whenever we get them up here, standing among them. They deserve all the appreciation we can give, that's it.
Well, thank you, sir, and thank you for all of our council comments, I echo the same sentiments for our PD, and I've always said that you don't have a community if you don't have somebody to keep the law in order and to make all of our citizens feel safe, so thank you. But I also want to reflect on the explorers and seeing all those incredible young faces that are dedicated and working, you know, it's so easy out there right now, it's so easy to tell kids that you don't have to get involved, and you don't have to participate, and you don't have to, to put a little extra effort in, and to see a row of young people that are getting involved in our law enforcement, and, and, you know, even if one of those is a future officer for this town, they, they learn and they experience, and very excited to see just the level of participation and seeing all of them out here was so great. I have a couple few, you know, just talking about, you know, things that go on here, and, and, and why, why so many good things are happening? You know, we talk about National Day of Prayer, and we're going to have an opportunity to to be able to worship together tomorrow and share stories and about what's going on in this incredible community. And then on Friday morning, a group of us will be out on the base, cutting the ribbon and welcoming the multipurpose center, cultural center, and the gym to the base construction. We'll be celebrating with our friends of the, the Latin community on Cinco de Mayo. For me, I'll be celebrating tomorrow, it's May the 4th, that's our star, it's my favorite day of the year, it's also May the 4th, be with you. But we all celebrate together, we celebrate what's happening in this community together. And then I look at things like, I think it was about two weeks ago, I know it was in between the previous meeting, I took my kids out to the monster trucks at Desert Empire Fairgrounds. And then I see the circus at the fairgrounds, and I see the Follies at the fairgrounds. And I hear what they're, the, the roads that are being tried and, we're building Ridgecrest people. And we're building it for not just, not just for everyone who's already here, but for all the people that aren't here yet. For the communities that are going to come, and I really want to commend our planning commission for approving the development that they did, and I know that's coming to council next for our formal. And I just want to go ahead and verbally say, I think that, again, our continued commitment to bring housing to this community is absolutely critical to the future of our community. Anybody out there who thinks that we, we suddenly aren't going to have people in this community, you know what, we'll have people in this community because we're going to create a great community that people want to live in. And we're already on the way to do that. We're going to break, continue to break these walls of shelter and isolation that people, some people have clung to for so long, but are not what we are in the future, because right now we are seeing it. We're seeing it in our youth, we're seeing it in our demographics, and we're seeing it in how we're going to grow an incredible community. And I'm so excited to see that. So, I also wanted to, to put a shout out to the trio of ladies upstairs, or the, it's now four, sorry, which includes Ricka, Isabel, Megan, and our newest addition, Jennifer Ricketts. Last week was National Administrators' Day, and we got to say thank you to them, but they don't always hear it from us. But I'll tell you, that, that's funny, because I, I want to share a story that I, we recognized them, and somebody came to me and said, you forgot Heather. And I said, well, I didn't forget Heather, because Heather's now the city planner, she's no longer somebody who's administrative to somebody else, she is her own self. And I said to them, and I was telling the story about when I met Heather back at the Chamber of Commerce all those years ago, and I say, that is an example of what is so awesome, is to see somebody build through Ridgecrest. So if you felt forgotten, you weren't, you were very much respected for all the work that you've put in. And, but I wanted to put a shout out to those four ladies. They keep our world running, and they keep Ron's world running, and they keep so many positive things happening for our departments and for everything else. Thank you to those, those ladies for keeping our council running so well. And then finally, I want to encourage everyone to come out to a couple things. So first, City August tomorrow night. I know that there's lots of people out there chattering and squawking and complaining, and you do a lot of it out there, but I invite you to show up here tomorrow night. We'll be here, we'll be here to listen to you, we want to know about your concerns. We know that trash isn't solved yet, we know that waste management is having some challenges. We're on top of it, we're talking about it all the time, we're not sitting here ignoring the problem. We simply have to work through the problem, rather than just taking a hand grenade and throwing it at it. That's not going to solve the problem. And so I'd welcome you here, and then of course, we have two other big events coming up. First, Night on Balsam, May 19th, come on out, we're going to have a great night. We're expanded it, we've brought some new things in, we're having a cornhole tournament, we're going to have beer and wine, we're going to have more food. We are taking everything that was great about Night on Balsam and adding 25%, maybe even more than 25%, but we're going to make it one step better and continue on that road. And the last is, for those of you that have not heard, or have not seen, or have not talked about, on July 1st is going to be our annual fireworks show at the Desert Empire Fairgrounds. And this show for years has been supported by our community, and I know that right now there's just a couple people really driving the force behind it. And I just want to encourage everyone in the community, if you feel like you really want to volunteer or get involved, the fireworks is a great place to get involved, they'd love your help. You can reach out to myself, any one of our council members will get you in touch with the coordinators. But more importantly, I hope to see this entire community out there on July 1st, celebrating what a, what a pleasure it is to be a part of Ridgecrest, and more importantly, what an honor it is to be a part of this country. Thank you all for a great meeting, it was an hour and a half, and I didn't even expect it to go that long. And I found a way to do it, whoever had the 7:30, I'm not going to talk over, I'm going to let the 7 o'clock winner be declared, and with that, I wish everyone out there a great evening.